allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start public portion, I was remiss at our last meeting in asking for a moment of silence for one of our beloved four school staff members and also the brother of Rosie Richardson. So I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in memoriam of his passing.
Can you hear my phone?
I'm just, I'm usually loud. Uh, thank you.
Uh, Kevi, I'd like to motion to move the presentation of Dana and our recognizing our elementary school students to the top of our agenda.
We have our second, second. Any discussion, all in favor? All right, okay, great. So we're gonna move the presentation to our students to the beginning. And I will welcome Dana Perettis up to the podium. It's a little light, so we don't want to have everybody out.
Dana, this one, this is our lesson.
Thank you, Kevi, and I would like to thank all of our families for being here tonight. Uh, each year in the West Haven Public Schools has a summer reading challenge because we know how important it is for our students to read over the summer and keep those minds sharp over the summer. So this year we thought we would make it a competition because I love a good competition. And tonight we are recognizing the top five elementary students from across the district, uh, which is nearly three thousand students. So you're the top five readers out of three thousand students in completing our summer reading challenge. So that's really exciting and we're so proud of all of you. So can we have a round of applause? So Carol is gonna unveil the posters that you all fundamentally post for and Michelle, I believe, is gonna take some pictures for us. So can I have Nora? And if Nora, you can hold your poster up. Come on up, Nora, come to the front. Congratulations Nora, congratulations. Our next summer reading contest winner is Becky, come on up Becky. Congratulations Becky, congratulations to Becky again. I don't think Ryan is here yet. If he, if he does come, well, oh, is he here? Come on up Ryan, come in. Perfect timing, Ryan.
Take your time, Ryan Stan.
Ryan, if you can just hold your poster so that I can get a nice picture. You guys want me to do it, Ryan? Cole, can we have Cole come on up? I'm right to the front, Cole. And Miss Hummel will help you hold your poster. Congratulations, Cole. And our final winner is Kenzie. Fun fact about Kenzie, I was Kenzie's mother's teacher a very long time ago. Congratulations, Kenzie. And I could just have all of our student winners with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and any board member who'd like to be in the photo. If we could just get a photo for the website and then we'll pause for a moment to allow our families to leave. Come on up, folks.
Why don't you, why don't you put your poster down but hold your, um.
And families, you're getting that copy of the poster and another copy of the poster will also be displayed in the student schools. So that'll be displayed. Thank you, thank you.
Don't be sorry.
Congratulations everyone. Thank you so much for everyone who came out and joined us tonight to their talk. We've seen the certificate. Reading is such an important part of what we do every day and it's so important that you're encouraging reading at home and we really do appreciate that. Thank you.
You guys are more than welcome to stay, but if you'd like to see your kids home and bathe and homework done and ready for bed, I totally understand.
There's your phone.
It's mutual. At this time, we'll return to the regular items on our agenda. Um, for public portion of the meeting, if there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board. Say your name and address at the microphone. Right behind you there.
For Chavias, Ten Knox Street. It went to my attention that the paraeducators' jobs have not been posted externally. That the paraeducators' jobs were not posted internally first before they were posted externally. So the contract states that the job should be posted internally for five, um, school days, five school days. And apparently that wasn't done. So that would mean that the contract was broken and no one wants a labor charge. So all I'm asking is that just be, you know, just keep up with them. Just do your job, do the job and that's all we could ask. And there'll be no labor charge and everything will be fine. We have enough issues going on, you know, and we don't need this one, right? We don't need this one. So we're asking that you post the jobs internally first and then external. Thank you.
Thank you.
Portia, again, you can speak to our HR person or you can talk to Dr. Larry. The easiest fix with that, if that has been the case, if we have hired some people externally, we can certainly give anybody affected the right to bid a job and then just move the new people into an open job. So if there's a problem, it's easy fix.
This time, is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the board? Or second time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? Or a third and final time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? The non-public portion is closed at six ten. I will turn it over to our student representatives for their reports.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Um, nice to see everybody. So a few upcoming things. Homecoming is here at the conference. Twenty ninth, so that's next week. Um, it's a haunted theme because it's so close to Halloween. I think that's pretty fun. Student recognition, um, Yusuf Turner on our football, varsity football team is the captain. He won the ORB Sports Scholar Athlete Award for baseball and he was also actually awarded the Army Scholarship for having the highest GPA on the team at the past Fairfield Prep game. So congratulations to him. Um, baseball is also having a mandatory meeting for any boys who will be trying now along with all of our winter sports are underway. I had hockey practice today, so that's very, very exciting. Our rink is gonna be very busy. Um, the pep rally was a success coming from a cheerleader that was in, one of someone who ran it, it went very well. Uh, football won the tug of war for boys and girls basketball won for the girls. Um, West Haven beat Fairfield Prep in the Army Push-Up Challenge with six thousand nine hundred thirty-two. Very proud because football did not go our way. We lost seventeen to fourteen.
We're happy anytime we could beat Fairfield Prep.
Anytime's a good time, that's for sure. And I will turn it over to.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. Something I want to highlight that our school did today actually is, um, our schools, um, there's a thing called CIAC Student Empowerment Day. And essentially, uh, most high schools from Connecticut go and not, not all, but some of the good high schools go. And then actually, we were able to send ten students from our high schools via the bus and we, some of our high, they put us all on the map. Like there was the State Board of Education was there, state legislator was there, everybody was there and West Haven was really out there. I also made the West Haven, what's it called, T W T H News. So like you might see me there on tonight, so yeah.
Good to know.
Yeah, it was a very good opportunity, um, to be able to connect with peers all state-wise. And, um, a lot of students from our school were able to go to state. It was a very fun time and a very great opportunity.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. It's great.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add one plug to that. I may be the oldest West Haven High School varsity cheerleader that will be participating in the varsity cheer alumni night at the Thanksgiving game. So if anyone is interested, please contact Riley Boynton, one of the captains. If you're interested, if you're an ex-West Haven High School cheerleader, I'm class nineteen eighty-four, I'm trying to talk Kim into joining me on the sideline. Uh, so they would love to have your support. You get a sweatshirt or a t-shirt and you get to cheer up. Do a little hail alongside the current cheerleaders. I did it a couple of years ago and it was so, so, so much fun. So I highly recommend it.
Kim was actually my first cheer coach, so I would, I would appreciate it. I was fine. That was twelve years ago.
All right, thank you guys. I appreciate it. Um, next I will turn it over to the superintendent for administration statuses.
It's a lot of, a lot of good news. I know we did really well in, uh, in all of our fall sports and getting your reports. I know we're hosting some SCC tournament games this week, so we're doing really well. Even the football team was a tough loss, but our two losses were to really good teams and my understanding is we still have a pretty good, pretty good shot at the playoffs, so. Um, but we're, we're having a really good, uh, fall season. I can't believe it's already mid-October, uh, a couple of weeks is Parents' Visiting Week. Uh, and I always like to remind people that, you know, several many years ago, we used to do it after the first market period closed. But, um, it's been for some time now that we do it now before the market period closes, which is, we think makes more sense. So that if kids aren't doing well, if there's opportunities to improve or make up work, uh, parents would have that, um, time with teachers to see what their, their child needs to do. Um, so that's coming up and that's in, you know, October, November, December, just fly by. Good news, um, last week the council approved the two or three resolutions regarding the Savin Rock Roof. Uh, we are scheduled on, on time to, um, start in the, in the spring as, um, Ken had said last week. Uh, we're also gonna start the, uh, our goal is to get the McRill project done around the same time too. So we're gonna be moving on that as well. Uh, you know, those are good projects that make the buildings last longer when the roofs are leaking and, um, hopefully we'll get those done in a timely manner. You know, one thing I wanted to say, uh, Bailey had, I think you guys know that we had some perfect scores last year with the testing and whatnot and they did really well. Um, and, um, every year as an Alliance District, uh, a school is chosen to be monitored. Uh, we were thrilled that they picked Bailey's here because we've got a lot to show and we've made so much progress. So they're gonna be coming on November eighteenth to do what they call Alliance, uh, monitoring. And then I thought, as I, last week, we got to hear the presentation that Bailey's gonna put on ahead of time. It was so well done, so much work put into it. I'm gonna bring that, bring that before the board. Once they do the, once they do the presentation for the Alliance people. So you will hear the presentation and you'll also be able to hear what their feedback was from the people over at the state. So I think that's something to look forward to. And again, they did, they did, they made tremendous strides and I don't think it was an accident when you hear some of the things that Mrs. Ryan had put in place last year.
You hear me, Rosa?
Yes.
Okay, good. Monitoring, is that a one shot?
No, it's every year. They change the form.
Or they're once to Bailey, they just come once.
They're coming once to Bailey, but will they come two or three times a year? But they claim they're changing the form, that, we'll see, that remains to be seen. We did send them a copy of the presentation, um, in case they're shit back and whatnot, but they'll actually come on November eighteenth to do it. And again, I thought it was so well done and they made such great progress there last year that you guys should hear about kinds of things that are going on. And, uh, and finally tonight, um, last year, and I know there were a lot of questions and a lot of like, uh, people were like shocked and didn't know what we were gonna do and we kind of gave you, uh, Van Cord was here around the same time last year. Gave you a, a projection of what we were going to be needing over the next few years to refresh all, all of our technology because of the upgrades we had made, the one-on-one computers. Uh, the good news is the council came through for us and there's money in the capital plan over the next five years. Between that and some of the other, uh, things that they're gonna talk about, the E-rate and whatnot. Uh, we've got a really good plan in place. Uh, feel free to question it if you have any, uh, issues or whatnot. Um, you know, we certainly can make some adjustments. And again, it's, I would say it's fluid now at this point anyway, because you want to make sure that what we do, we, we complete the school. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mike Grandy, Jeff Grandy, uh, all the other guys, Scott, Tony and Jeff are gonna come up or if you're just there to, for moral support, but.
More moral support. They're tired. This is, uh, late for these guys. Do you think we need her?
I'm, good evening. I have a problem. Sometimes I talk too loud, so I'll try to keep it down. Uh, yes, uh, Jeff Tagliatello, uh, Scott Kidd, Tony Henry, these are senior guys in our team that are in and around the district uh, a daily basis. And then obviously, Mike and I, uh, come and meet every, any folks, uh, once a year to give this update. So, Tag, if you would. So for those of us who don't know who we are, we're Van Cord. Um, our company originated in West Haven. Many of us are actually, at some point, lived in West Haven, went to West Haven Schools. So it's always a pleasure to work, uh, particularly in our backyard, uh, and support the West Haven School District. Uh, we do managed IT services and cybersecurity for the district, uh, along with other schools in Connecticut. But particularly for West Haven, we have an actually dedicated team that works there. So tonight's update is going to be a little bit of a journey. I know it's really exciting stuff. People, uh, expected a bigger audience for IT, uh, a little bit let down. Um, but we'll try to keep it moving along and, and to the point. Um, every year we try to bring to you folks on the board what our concerns are, what the concerns are that we hear from our team and what they're hearing from faculty, staff and even students. So tonight's presentation is somewhat brief, but to the point about what we're up against and what we need to do to kind of protect the investment that the district has made over the last, let's call it five years. Um, we use five years as kind of a good marker because when you own anything with technology, five years is about the limit of what you get until you have to upgrade it, unless you're my mother, and then maybe you can get ten years out of it. So tonight, we're gonna talk about some of the educational drivers. Why is IT important? And I know some of this may be fairly elementary, but it's worth kind of noting. Everything that we do in the school district is based now on one-to-one devices. I mean, start from the pre-K all the way up through twelfth graders. They're, have access to a device. It's integrated with Google Suite, Google School. And they are getting a device in their hands at a very early age to enforce the educational parameters that the instructors are setting. And this is important because we need to make sure that that equipment works and we need to make sure that the network it rides on works. And in all the subsequent testing that the state mandates, it has to work. Ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent of the time. And that's what these guys do for us every day. And so one of the other challenges that we face is that oftentimes, even though we're, have to provide this gear to the students, to the faculty, to the staff, there really isn't always money available to do that. And I want you to be aware of that because we work very closely with the West Haven School District over the years that have really sought to find avenues of funding where we could increase and try to get ahead of the curve with technology. COVID gave us that sort of huge wave of monies that were being dispersed. But unfortunately, those monies have dried up now and so we have to be more creative. And we need to bring to light what our challenges are fiscally so that you folks are aware of it. Perfect. So currently, you know, one more. So the help team takes on average per year thirty-five hundred plus tickets from all the schools in the district, staff, et cetera. And a ticket could be something simple as my computer didn't boot to something more egregious such as I've been hacked or I have a spam or email or some type of phishing attack. Um, we get a variety of anything that seems that has an electrical input, a support tank taken for. So sometimes it's not related to us, but we have to run with it. So it might be something related to cameras. It might be something related to the school cafeteria system. So our folks are constantly handling all these day-to-day operational, uh, components and they do an awesome job at it. Jeff, I don't want to interrupt you, but, um, the stadium and the tube became an issue because, you know, again, something that we didn't think of, but we can explain. Oh, great story. I, I totally forgot about that. Uh, so talking about mandated, well, you can't buy, typically buy tickets anymore when you go to an athletic event. It doesn't matter if it's a charity, my daughter was a cheerleader, football, hockey, you need to have the CIAC monitors access to buying access to that facility. It doesn't matter who's there or where you go. So we had to securely roll out wireless to enable any of the ticket takers access to a secure network wirelessly. Uh, and also provide streaming at the rink for either warm-up tunes or the national anthem, et cetera, et cetera. So it's pervasive, to Neil's point.
And even reporting the scores.
Yes. You, you can't do anything without, uh, an access to the internet now. So I'm sure you're mostly aware of that. Uh, thank you for bringing that up. That was, that was a little bit of a nightmare, that whole thing, but we got it resolved. Um, our guys have been busy this summer, uh, with software updates to wireless. Wireless in this district is, uh, paramount. We have moved, still use a lot of wired connections like ethernet wiring, but we use wireless everywhere in the district. As Neil said, inside, outside, on the, in the sports arenas, um, and then anywhere in between like the vested peoples. Wireless is, is critical to the operation. So we need it running a hundred percent of the time. Uh, so we've done some updates there. Occasionally, well, because wireless does change and there's an update, we might hear complaints that one side of the school or classroom's not good. And so we'll have our guys go investigate that and see if we need to add some more access points or kind of figure out how to tweak that. The biggest component of this update, then we'll get into the figures, my brother Mike, uh, is gonna handle that, is our Chromebook inventory. And I really want to emphasize the importance of this. I know Neil had just mentioned earlier about city council funding, how we're gonna handle it going forward. But the big takeaway tonight is that this doesn't stop. And so most of the inventory we have, hardware inventory, is five plus years old in terms of these one-to-one Chromebooks. The other piece of this is we're very limited on spares. I know Scott Kidd over there was waiting for me to say that because he has to handle all the problems when there's not enough spares. We need spares. Unlike maybe at home where you have an extra computer, we need a percentage of the total student population for spares because if there's testing, if there's any other type of breakage, student needs to have access to another device and they don't, they can't wait. They need that. So we have to be cognizant of how that's going to affect our inventory and our ability to serve that population. Um, currently, we have, um, no more active warranties on the gear that you take. I just wanted to make that up, make that point clear. Something breaks, we're past the warranty window. And the reason why we're past it is because we haven't bought any new gear in the last few years. Uh, we've been really stretching what we have in inventory. Other things that we've done to improve reliability in districts is we've implemented a new, a more cost-effective way to let filter. We need to let filter every piece of traffic that goes out. We're subject to FERBA and other HIPAA compliance. So we have to be very careful about how we monitor and manage that. But we have a new cloud-based system and that actually should create more performance for the network we have here. So we're trying to do, uh, more with less, obviously, uh, but in particular, we're aware that any impact we make, particularly with wireless access, has to be very reliable, very quick. Yeah, and also as my brother just mentioned, which he does often to me, it was a big cost savings in terms of the savings between the previous appliance that was there and a new cloud subscription that Jeff Tag, Scott and Tony worked on. So guys, kudos to you for finding. And lastly, certainly not least, um, we work very closely with the building committee, um, particularly with Dankarney. And we are often told, uh, when to move and how fast to move by Ken, particularly when it was to move from Washington, the old Washington, to the new Malloy School and subsequently back into the new Washington School, which is absolutely beautiful. Uh, our team made it look like we were never there at Malloy. And they made the transition between all the gear that we could bring from the old Washington School up to Malloy, had it operational for all the instructors and then all the new gear implemented before anybody got back into the school this summer. And I just want to thank you guys. You guys did an awesome job. I appreciate it. So. These guys too, I, I, you're being a little bit modest. They were, they are in, at the ground floor when the planning for the new building starts, running through installing all the gear and making sure that it's working. That's true. Lot of meetings, lot, a lot of meetings, but it's our job to make sure it's smooth. We don't want any surprises. So. Okay, Tag. So the first piece of this is E-rate. E-rate's a program, uh, every five years is a new batch of money that the government releases. And what we do and other schools around the country is they use that money for infrastructure upgrades. So a piece of infrastructure upgrade that qualifies would be, for example, the access point over my head, that blink and bling. So it's very specific about what you can use. And so I said earlier that our entire network is built on network switches, access points, um, the wiring that goes into it, the firewalls, and that stuff is actually covered very well by E-rate. But there's a lot of limitations of what we can do with it and can't do with it. But we've been very good about making sure we get the most value for the district and making sure we get, um, some forward-looking plans when we do it. So for instance, we wanted to make sure that the school district had the most, uh, the latest, um, either switching or wireless standards because we knew that there were going to be changes to that. What we didn't want to do is spend all this, you know, government money on stuff that needed to be ripped out two years later. And we've done a very good job of keeping a top of that. This year will be the first of five years, so they're doing a five-year cycle of new money that'll be available for infrastructure upgrades. I can't stress enough how critical it is for our school district to utilize these funds and how we have in the past. But we continue to do so and it's north of about, every year it changes, it's based on a variety of different counts. But over that five-year period, you're allowed, allotted about a million change of school dollars. There's some match and there's some other math that goes with it. But the key takeaway is it does not cover endpoints. So it doesn't cover the Chromebooks, it doesn't cover the laptops. That is something that they don't use in that program and that's important because people often confuse it with, hey, it's just free money, just go out and go buy some new laptops for the instructors. We can't do that. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it. We definitely use it and we use it well. And last on the list, West Haven, along with one other nonprofit we've worked with in the entire state, were selected by E-rate for a cybersecurity pilot program that we helped apply for to see if we can offset some of the cybersecurity costs. We were only a handful of, uh, schools chosen in Connecticut, but even more so in the entire nation. We were one of a very select amount of pool, uh, excuse me, schools that were put into that pool. So we're still waiting to see next steps, but I bring that up because we were a little bit concerned about applying for it because it's the government. Sometimes they're not there to always help you. And this particular instance was that cybersecurity is so important to this school system that we took a shot. We actually got a little bit of money. So we're still working on how the details worked out with that. All right, I'm gonna hand over to Mike. Always did the fun part of the program. Always get the fun part of the program. So uh Jeff touched on um the program applications or uh I'm sorry, the budget that we had laid out last year, which was uh quite frankly, a little bit of a um scary looking number. That was looking at us uh in total, it was somewhere in the vicinity of maybe around seven and a half to eight million dollars of expected spend over a five-year period. The bad news, we'll start with the bad news. Bad news was we made it through the entire year, and it's good news from a budget perspective, without any really large infrastructure purchases. So very little in the way of endpoints, anything that was purchased was part of either a project that was going on or alternative funding that was made. So from a budgeting perspective, we had a lot of luck in surviving. Um, it's also credit to the team and and those who aren't here from our team in keeping sort of these endpoints moving uh and working. What we put together, and this is based on the most recent approval from the capital budget plan from the city council, which was approximately one point two million dollars of um capital funds that would be allowed in their most recent bonding. So that's going to be for the twenty-five, twenty-six term. So we we based the need off of what we know is available. In a perfect world, that number of two thousand units and the quantity would be much higher because we have a much higher need upfront. But knowing what we have and knowing how we could deploy those funds, we're using two thousand as the budgetary figure for this current year. And I think that we've got some hope that there's going to be a continuation of what that spend will be moving forward, that amount one point two slightly scaling up based on uh appropriations. So you can see seven, seven hundred fifty thousand, sort of that's building up to eight hundred fifty thousand over the next four years. This would lead to about a two thousand unit refresh year over year over year. So it's good news. It gets us farther along, but it still means, based on the current number of units that are out in the district, that there's there's still going to be a shortfall. So we're taking what we can get for sure, and we're going to use it, maximize the value. But um I just, I don't want to paint the picture that it's perfect and rainbows from here on out. It's we're we're doing the best we can with the limited amount of of budget that we've been given. One sort of point of reference in how we're able to do things came through the Chromebooks stay in the classroom. That's a key because that protects the units generally when they go home. That's when it's challenging. But you can't expect a lot of things to happen at home on the homework front and all the other things from a program perspective, if you're not giving appliances or like a uh piece of hardware to the student. Um, so we have had really good luck with that. So we're going to focus on the areas of need first. We've identified some of those with our oldest units. Those are most broken. Those are out of warranty. Um, so this is Chromebooks. Tag, can you move to the next? Oh, sorry, laptops and desktops. Um, again, this is more in the uh area of faculty staff replacement. This is a phased-in approach over the years. This is only two hundred fifty units uh at a clip. Um, desktop units continue to decrease, so as the need for desktop units decrease over time, that money will just get reverted into um portable laptops, maybe more Chromebooks, something like that. But we've allocated money because we've gone several years without doing any desktop purchases. Um, we're looking at about, again, about a twenty-five percent replacement uh figure. Promethium boards. Um, from a student experience and instructor perspective, this is a key piece of technology in every classroom. It's also one of the most expensive pieces to uh purchase. Right now, we're running on um again, like with some of the others, we're running on spares, but we feel very confident based on the loss history that the current number of spares will get us through this year. So we've moved that budget allocation out a year. If that needs to change, it will have to come from one of those other areas that we talked about previously. Um, those are roughly four thousand five hundred dollars per unit, and that's including installation, which is quite an expensive piece of it as well. Um, we've been lucky, not lucky, you shouldn't say lucky, you've been diligent in your uh in your budgeting when it comes to capital expenses for new buildings. So every time there's been a new building, this building, Washington, that's part of what they call F F and E expense. So we're able to sort of refresh those at that time. So that's been a big help.
Like does that let us put those, like for example, at Malloy School, will we be able to pull those Promethium boards into our spares because we got new ones at Washington?
One hundred percent correct.
Before the city got their hands on.
So that was a huge.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we we we, it was like we were never there.
I had a question about, you say the installation, is that?
It's the connectivity, the um the actual mounting of the boards, so the electrical, it's 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 more of a hardwired process. So it's just more intensive than deploying um, you know, a laptop or desktop.
Set up apps on it or they'd have to install all that?
A little, a little bit.
There's a Chromebook, for lack of a better term, built into the board itself, so.
So we have a standard image that for the dis- for the district that gets put on.
And the last piece, which is a very important piece, and also another that has been sort of pushed along, is there's a lot of, we say the word cloud a lot, right? We talk about everything. It's this nebulous term that we love to refer to, but it just means that there's a computer running somewhere else in somebody else's building. We built our own cloud here uh for the district, um but it still needs servers to operate. And we've gone, I think we're on year five, seven, oh seven, if I could add, that'd be great, two thousand eighteen was the last purchase. So um this is another really important expenditure that's coming along. Um, based on budget, we feel confident that this could be uh done this year as well. So um, you know, not much else to say aside from some of these numbers, they're big numbers, but there's no way to escape them.
Do we currently have two?
I think you have one, two. Uh, so we have, we have um more than two. We have virtual servers that run on top of the hardware. We're talking about the replacement of the hardware, hardware and some of the software. Uh, without boring everybody to tears, I'll just say that uh two is sort of the figure we need uh to resize the current data center. Because we're trying to shrink it, make it smaller. Um, but there's some other challenges with our backup um solution that we need to address that we're currently addressing right now. So um and it's just, it's just hardware. We 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 brought stuff to, we can no longer get warranties on it, and that's dangerous.
And those are, are those like standalone or are they redundant?
There's so much redundancy in the software that we run in it. So we have virtualization, which allows us to think of it like picture in picture in a television, so we can kind of move stuff around. Uh, we have a very good backup system to restore it if we lose it. Um, but at the end of the day, we still need the hardware to drive it. So that's, that's why we still need the hardware. Uh, we can't just put it in the cloud, so.
Especially on a day like today. Did you guys have any trouble?
Not us. No, we're a Microsoft provider, so Microsoft Azure was a hundred percent. Amazon, not so much. So I'm just going to take this one. This is the end network infrastructure, not to be um uh any further into the ground. But these are some of the figures we're projecting for E-Rate funding. So this is the one area where we can upgrade things and count on uh outside money to help us significantly reduce amount to the district. And that was the previous side where I was talking about E-Rate. This is all the plumbing, for lack of a better term, that we replace on a five to six-year basis in school. So access points, network switches, firewalls, uh and some of the structure cable that that were required to update with those. And and just one note, um, just because we didn't talk specifics, but it's roughly around eighty percent reimbursement. So every dollar that's spent roughly eighty percent gets funded by um E-Rate, which is a USAC program monitored and funded by the FCC. So this is sort of the summary of everything that we just talked about. Um, you'll see we've made some assumptions, obviously, in there about uh E-Rate reimbursement. Um, where it brings us is, you know, in that two point two to two point five billion dollar range on an annual basis. Um, there's a lot of subscriptions and licensing and other items that are covered and 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 sort of an annual operating expense for the district. By or to Apple, Microsoft, all the sort of familiar names that we're just talking about, um and those add up. And so what the district has been able to do in the past, and and we try to sort of navigate this, is if there's a multi-year purchase, if money's available, and we can do a multi-year purchase and save fifteen or twenty percent on that, we'll try to do that. Uh, but again, that's based on availability. Um, we did, of the one point two million that is roughly expected from city council, we did make a carve-out for bus, excuse me, for bus technology. Um, that's not necessarily an area that we'll implement, but it's something to be available for the district to utilize um for tracking software and other things. So it was an important sort of carve-out. We talked to Neil about that, um to sort of designate for that. Obviously, we'll be involved in anything that touches the district technology, but we wanted to ensure that that was going to be available um if and when needed. That might be, oh, and this is our cybersecurity. I'll hand it back to Joe. Just riveting.
Jeff, one for that, the, on the previous side, when you were talking about licensing, is there any kind of review process for what we're using to see if we can consolidate? You know, maybe Apple has something that we're using from Barracuda that we can carve that off.
So um the short answer is most of the subscriptions are enterprise subscriptions, so like there's a Microsoft Campus Agreement subscription. So the entire district gets used as much Microsoft products as they'd like that are under that agreement. Um, but what's not under that agreement is Microsoft three sixty-five, so there's a separate agreement for that subscription. And so each of these vendors, as much as we, it used to be consolidated, have gotten wise to try and break this out into monthly subscriptions. Google, pardon, you know, they have their, they're not monthly so much as a, they have a contract, but we pay for every Chromebook has a Google list. So I just want to throw them under the bus for a moment, so. Um, but we, these are the subscriptions, not necessarily for educational software, but for things like Microsoft and and I didn't Barracuda anymore. But uh V V VMware, there's a bunch of other subscriptions.
I guess, well, you know, that you're right, that's up to, what more is there?
Money again from the customer.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, but I think you're right. E-Rate. Oh, so E-Rate is is money um that the government collects on everybody's cell or phone bill or landline bill. And it's redistributed to all the school systems in the United States. And this has been going on for a better part of twenty-plus years. If you look at your phone bill, you'll see a federal FCC universal fund line that everybody has it. In return, schools give a free lunch count to um to the government when with, through the USAC, as Mike said, it's a quasi-federal agency of the FCC. From there, they give you up all this money, and like I said, every five years, they do a kind of a recalibration of that fund. So this coming year, twenty-five, twenty-six, will be the next year one of that five-year cycle. It can only be used, this is the key takeaway, it can only be used for the delivery of content from the internet to the classroom. It's not, it's not the laptop, it's not the Chromebook, it's, it's the wireless access points, the network switches, the wiring and firewall.
Did they start that program to increase equity among lesser wired communities versus higher, we're excellent or wired? I feel like.
No, actually, it was the, this, it totally dates me now. My guys will laugh at me because I know I'm such a historian. It actually started with um rural communities getting dial tone. So when you, but they needed to put the phone system out there, they needed to get, you know, uh they had to run wire, you know, twenty miles to get to Mrs. Jones Farm. And it's just, you know, ATTs of the world are like, can't afford to run twenty miles of wire to make that happen. Well, substitute wire with fiber optic, that was one driver. The other driver is um the delivery now to get to the endpoint, which the endpoint we call the Chromebook, laptop, et cetera. They understand that um typically, although I don't think they realize they're on some point need to reconsider this, that the plumbing piece that was so expensive twenty years ago, it's actually least expensive now compared to the mass amount of Chromebooks that we have. Is that good?
No.
Yeah, he has a two-part question. I'm not sure if it goes to you or Neil. For the money and fiscal year for the bus technology. And they got to have it this year, if not, could that go towards, I think you had a seventy-eight thousand dollar number service.
I, I, so. The plan, the original plan is to work with Winkle to split the costs. We thought because badges were involved and they they could use some food service. In fact, I was at a conference, a superintendent conference on Friday, and Meriden had done something similar, and they used on the food service money as well because badges were involved. Um, just to see what's out there. It was actually was a uh, it was a superintendent's conference. We went to Bradford. They have, uh, for those of you that don't know, they have a ten-year plan or contract with a company, but it didn't assume where they're going to im- implement all electric buses. So I thought that was interesting, but I went more to find out about tracking uh and what kinds of programs and things are out there. Uh, and there were several uh that um that were mentioned. So we're, we're going to try to keep it simple for Winkle. Where we have the money, if we use, if we were to use this carve-out money, we don't have to. And Dana, uh, who is, and Jeff has been working on this since the very beginning. We don't think it's that complicated. However, it's, you know, again, the two issues with Winkle, as I had mentioned, is number one, it's not the contract. Number two, we don't own the buses. Uh, now I thought I saw something, and again, I don't know, we're going to look into another company. Where um we were at the bus yard. And part of it was you, when the bus drivers went to the dispatcher, they were giving their keys, they were given a, like a small iPad. So maybe that suffices as opposed to putting something on the bus. We're going to, we're still looking into that. And I'm not going to make any promises, but it is something that, you know, we've been, we've been, we've been hitting Craig pretty hard on, and and we're going to try, we'll do the best we can.
Um, that was a perfect question. That's exactly what my head went when I saw that, you know, are we moving closer now than to get?
I like to say yes, but again.
Yeah.
It's not easy.
We have, we have to be really careful to the, like, it has to be something that we contain with us.
It it's funny.
You have to.
Great point, Kevin.
It's not some hardware that gets installed on the bus that, and listen, I I I'm a hundred percent support Craig Winkle does a great job with the district and our kids. And I'm, I'm not saying anything defamatory about that. I tell you our working relationship, but you never know.
It's an excellent, it's an excellent point. And in fact, um, again, I was talking, I believe, to the business manager of Meriden. And that's one of the things he was emphasizing to me, that um they just went to a new company, they were able to take whatever software and hardware. And it was, it was property of the district that was able to move to whoever the next company was.
And even not a new company, even if, God forbid, something happens and Winkle has a whole outage of buses and they have the pull-ins for a student and say, hey, can you cover our routes? I'm sure there could be, you know, God knows what natural disaster that happens that things need to shift around, needs to be portable with the driver versus stuck on the.
That's, that's, well, again, that was one of the things that I, that I first I s- thought I saw the other day. Again, we're still looking into it. Um, but I think you might as well take it. Um, again, worst case scenario, we're going to write, we're going to write an RFP next time. That's going to make sure all of our needs are are met and those kinds of things are taken into consideration.
I was wondering if you could just elaborate a bit on the subscription. Um, you mentioned Microsoft and the Microsoft Office sort of package and Google. Is there value to having both those? Because I feel like we confuse one or the other with like Google classroom. They have both forms and full dots, full slides, and most of the students have, or if not all of the students have that, apps, database, Google, subword, email address. So is there a value to having both of those subscriptions, or would it be beneficial to kind of do a, an analysis as to which one is more generally used?
Uh, well, I'll go ahead. This is, this has been an ongoing discussion today.
And I'm sure it's not, but he's a tech guy and he's going probably be really annoyed that I asked.
No, no, it's a, it's a good question. We actually argued internally years ago. Um, so just, just to kind of reframe the question, I'll give it to Tag. The answer is we, we, we run two different cloud subscribes.
We we have, we we run two different cloud subscriptions, right? So we run, and this is outside of all the technical networking stuff that we work on. We run Microsoft three sixty-five, which provides for the vast majority of people in the district, uh staff, educators. Um their email, and in some cases, some of those, well, just their email, we'll leave it there. It's easier to know. Email and then the MFA security for that. The classroom component, separate from the, call it the business component, is Google Suite. For the teachers to use Google Classroom with the kids and to protect the kids. Because the email functionality in Google, it resides only in that cloud. Now I'm going to gently hand the mic.
So I'll try not to get too technical, and I realize I sometimes go down radical here, but. The um actual Google email accounts and everything are free to the educational space. As are our Microsoft email accounts, so long as we continue to purchase. Our Microsoft operating systems that run on our endpoints, our Windows laptops that our teachers use, and our desktop computers and. Things of that nature. So we actually don't pay for those licenses. We do have other services that we pay for, so like our advanced antivirus detection, we would have to pay for regardless. Um there's some other Microsoft services, but the actual office subscription that you referenced and things of that nature. Uh because we're EDU and the level of subscription that we use are free on both Microsoft and Google sites that house. Um there are other subscriptions outside of Microsoft and Google that we use that are not free. But those two particular ones that you asked about are free uh uh on both.
Sorry, that's so. Thank you for explaining it. No, I appreciate that. No, no questions are still.
That was a good question. It's a very good question. Told you it was gonna be riveting.
You had mentioned that the companies have gotten smart, and they grow things out. So are there some things to skip while running? Microsoft or we have to have, and it only works.
Yeah, that's exactly. So I was right about to make a point just about that. So the model, um I would say within the last ten years, has rapidly shifted to. There used to be a reliance on a piece of hardware, and that's how the manufacturers would make all their money. It didn't matter how you procured it. Now, everything is moved to what they call recurring revenue model. So there's always a subscription attached to every device. So even when we're showing the numbers on some of the purchases outside of. The Chromebooks that we've talked about. So the servers have extended warranties and software that is built on them. The firewalls that we talked about have annual subscriptions that it's licensing essentially in order to use the unit and have it do what it needs to do. You have to pay certainly on money every year. So that's when we, when we use the word subscriptions and licensing. We're referring to sort of the global amount of that. So the data backup that we're running within the district. The storage in the cloud that we're trying, that that we've built, all of those things.
Right, email security.
Email security, all of those things um is sort of, we're lumping it together for purposes of sort of context here. But um I think there's eight, I'm gonna say eighteen. There's a lot of line items of different, different things, and we've pared it down and bundled as much as we possibly could. And then I think the last slide was related to what we've done. I'll hand it back to Jeff, because this, this is great.
So we, we've actually done a lot of cybersecurity initiatives in the last, over the last three years, but particularly in the last two. Uh focused on uh security awareness training for end users. So teachers, staff. Don't click on a malicious link and download stuff and and to create bad things. Um it's automated, it teaches them if they've done something wrong, every now and again, it'll do a random phishing campaign to see if they're listening or looking. But it's a very good tool, and it's actually a requirement of pretty much any cybersecurity policy or any cybersecurity plan. So that's underway, and and that would be also an example of another subscription, just to kind of point them out where I can.
You guys are good too, because you got me. I turned off my notifications up from my email because I popped up on a notification. I was like, oh, let me click.
See, it's working. That's great. Thank you. Uh managed detection and response. Um this is another huge player, and and we have to protect every endpoint. Not necessarily Chromebooks, but every laptop and workstation and managed detection and response. Anytime we see, even if these guys are busy doing their thing, we'll get alerts in our security operation center that. Um you know, Jeff Randy clicked on something, and now they're downloading payload into his laptop. Take that laptop offline. So there's another subscription service. It's Microsoft service, it's not included in their um campus agreement. But it's another feature that we had to install to various cyber uh audits that we had in the third party.
I also like that you send a message afterwards saying, hey, you want a refresher on cybersecurity? Like targeted education. I I was like, no, I don't need the education. Thanks. I learned my lesson.
Yeah, start taking your sales calls.
I turn off my notifications.
So the other big piece that we've done is cloud-based security event body. And um it's a, it's a lot of stuff, but it's really simple. We capture everything that moves through the network. Credential wise to servers, firewalls, uh and that's logged in the Azure cloud in Microsoft. And we have to do that because if there is an incident, we need a way to A, get some of the logs before the hackers do it. So it's, we don't keep it here. We have to keep it, you know, away from the school district. And we can see within, you know, hours, um what's happening, where, where, where did that? Um where did it happen? What data was taken? Who was responsible? So it's, it's a huge piece of the cybersecurity puzzle. Um and then multi-factor authentication. We all use it. If you go to your bank. If you do anything now with Microsoft, it it prompts you with a, you know, text message or a code. Everything has multi-factor authentication. It's the idea that you know your user name and password, but we still don't trust you. So we're gonna send you a code to something that you have in your hand to make sure it's you. So and that's gone very well, and that's probably saved our bacon a bunch of times, for sure.
Just seeing Power School, and I, I think I'm calling you out in a good way. I remember when there was that big Power School outage all over, we were safe because of some things you had placed, right?
That was a huge breach, and if you noticed, it was quickly swept under. I don't know if you've heard any more about that, but it was a major breach. Um we had a bunch of different, there's a bunch of different things that we had in place. I can't take all the credit for it, but some of it was locked, but the other piece of it was, we did have a lot of security, and I, that's all Jeff tagged on that one.
I'd like to take credit, but uh it's actually probably a physical thing. We were safe because. All the hosted Power School servers were compromised, so. Um as Jeff said earlier, most of it just in the cloud, it's not someone else's computer, a different building. So Powers will host a bunch of servers for a bunch of different districts. We still host our own Power School server here upstairs. Um so those servers were compromised and. They attacked where they could get a lot.
I remember being really impressive because that set a lot of people, and West Haven was good, so.
Just as what unplugged ours.
Yeah, cybersecurity is a huge endeavor, so it 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 never stops. That's the other piece of it.
Expensive.
Expensive too, very expensive, so. Um so then, again, we think enough of your time, but it, the twos said it seems expensive, it never ends. Um we constantly, as a company, have to do it ourselves. We have to do the right things for the district to make sure that they have, you know, are we missing anything as your vendor? So we take it very, very seriously, and you'll see, well, over the next year, we'll be ramping this up even more so. Because the industry and the landscape has dictated that. Um we need to be able to mitigate risk for the district. We need to make sure that when the kids show up at eight o'clock in the morning, seven thirty, that things work. And when the school system, if we, God forbid, you know, have a uh incident, we need to keep moving past it. So that's what these, we're gonna be working on a lot of this going in the future, or now, so.
I wanna amend my statement that it's expensive. It's more expensive. It's expensive, but more expensive not to invest in it.
Yes, so let me know what you want me to go out on stuff. Is the first one for addiction security officer, kind of like, if there's a person who just told a.
Uh a little bit. It's more of a, sort of a, what we call a CISO, a chief security officer. So it's somebody that's a security designer that's trained in compliance and sort of the legal issues to create policy and framework. So um but we have an incident that goes, but you use some of those people, but it is, um at that point, you're away from waving your hands. And now you're typing on keyboards, so. Well, I think that's it, right? We're, we're done? Wow, that was, thank you very much. Good questions. Any questions you have after this? Just let us know. We're happy to to answer.
That's the hook, alright.
I I was impressed with the questions because they were way over my head. One of the things too, I think, um that we now have a plan in place, and I hope you feel pretty good about it. Uh what are the, what are the big jobs that will happen now is that as we start to replenish. We'll start to create more spears, so that will get us through, even though we'd like to move a little bit faster, we'll, we'll, we'll develop a bank of spears. Which I think will be helpful. And that's what those guys will be working on during the summer.
They kept this all going for seven years and so.
Yes.
And warranties have run out, and we're still going. So it is time.
Favorite clips and duct tape.
Yeah.
I know. We've been around the district for a while. We grew up here, so we know what we have to do, so.
We appreciate you guys coming in.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks so much. Do you have anything else? He did have a couple things too. Make sure you talk into the microphone, Rose, be very, she's way down the end.
Is it anyways, you know, your second year at bench park, and actually, I'm ready for into it for years. So um we do have nights, the elementary level, that we encourage families to come to. Because that's where they get a good idea of what the resource is like. Um we have demonstrations, we share resources, we share parent, you know, information. Um they'll do games and stuff that go along with both the benchmark and I'm ready. So in the fall, we have in our elementary schools, we're doing our literacy nights. I don't know if you're familiar with them. And then we're doing our math nights in the spring to showcase I'm ready. Um the nights in the fall, we have four coming up next month. That's why I've given you a little bit of a heads up. Because I know the calendar, Amanda's gonna get the calendar out to you, but they're almost in a row. So um the dates for those are um these four schools. Haley is November fifth, Haggles is November sixth, Savin is November thirteenth, and Force is November eighteenth. Then again, the months in the spring will be the math ones, and you will get those ahead of time. Um the coordinators are actually working very hard right now to um lean our professional development for election day. And there's a variety of things now that we're offering, RIS, AI, some strategies, reading, Kamba. So if you're curious about those, I know I'll meet uh two of you next week for the curriculum committee. I can share some of the stuff that we're doing for professional development. Um and. Besides the family nights, um I know they have some other wonderful nights coming up. If you look at the calendar, Amanda will let you know.
Thank you, Judy. I already, and I already put my plug in for the varsity cheer thing, so I'm good too. Um I'll entertain a motion. Oh, the show, almost made.
Oh, yeah, hold on, go ahead.
Almost made uh will be Friday, November twenty-first at seven P M. Saturday, November twenty-second at two P M and seven P M. The students, well, I got them coming today, but had rehearsal. Uh so they will be pitching out to everyone for ads to games and all that.
And if you're interested, I, I don't know if everybody heard me before, we put a board, full page ad for fall hand spray. If you wanna um see kids, she will collect your payment.
Yes.
Alright, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October sixth meeting. Motion by Bob, second, but Heather, any discussion? Hold a favor, any opposed, any extensions, that trick, abstentions? Motion carries. The rest of the agenda is informational, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn at seven oh six.
Thank you.